I think I can hear you now. Go ahead.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, she's rebooting and getting everything lined up.
All right, I've got it through the phone now.
All right, you can hear us good?
Yes.
All right. All right, folks, out of the time now, we're going to continue meeting from the last board meeting. Um, we've got a few housekeeping things we need to take care of first before we get into the budget workshop. Uh, we had books to have an EMS appropriation. Did everybody receive the information on that?
Yes.
Does anybody understand why the appropriation is needed?
If they're here, I'd like them to come up and ask a couple of questions.
Sure.
Kimberly's here. Kent too, as well.
Good evening, sir.
And you have, just put it in kindergarten terms, so people listening and everybody here just kind of understands what happened, how we got there, and what would you do to fix it this time of year?
Absolutely. So, we signed the contract last early summer with ESS, the contract agency for the county. They were with the squad for 20 years before us. Um, everything was going well. Some surrounding counties drastically increased what they were paying, and ESS started losing employees at a rapid rate. At that point, they jumped in and they said, "We don't have a choice. We've got to increase our rates midterm, or we're going to lose all of our employees and we won't have anyone to send to you." Um, they let us know that the rates were non-negotiable. We decided to try to take a meeting with them and negotiate anyways. They did negotiate with all seven counties that they contract with. Um, they put their terms out there at an increase of $10 per hour, going from 35 to 45. Amelia and Powatin County negotiated. We were able to save $72,000 with our negotiations this year. Nonetheless, it was still a big blow. It was a $189,000 increase for the remainder of the year. That is no increase in services. It's just to maintain what we had.
Switching would be
Um, switching would be very detrimental. The county did RFP this out when, when they started with the contract. They did come in the best. Um, they're the best for the county, and they know the county. They know the ambulances. They know the people. Um, to make matters worse, almost immediately, that happened in, I believe, August. Almost immediately, the emergency squad volunteers came to us and said, "We've had a decline in volunteers yet again. We can no longer staff Friday nights. We need you to increase that coverage." So that came in September. Then in October, we began to hear that there were going to be some state changes that are not mandatory, but if we don't do them, we may, you may as well not provide services anymore. We would have very low-level services for Amelia County, some of the lowest in the state. Um, and we knew that that was coming. We knew that the changes would not be coming forth with more information until later in the winter. So because of that, we decided to hold until we had more information. We were being told that it was going to cost us about $50,000 for those state changes. We've worked it. We've negotiated. The volunteer squad has been very helpful with it. They've taken on some of the cost and also are assisting me with managing it, because I'm not a paramedic, guys. I'm a paper person. Um, and because they've helped to offset the cost, and we've negotiated some deals, we've managed to take that from $50,000 down to about a $14,000 cost to the county. But we did not have those numbers until the May 2 border pharmacy meeting. So we requested our appropriation on May 2 as soon as we received the final numbers.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I wasn't on here, and I don't know what's happened till now, and that just like directly towards you. I'm talking about anybody that gets money from us. Personally, if it gets something like that comes up several months in advance, I would think. I don't, I don't know if they knew, but it'd be nice to know, hey, this is coming down the chute. And then that pointing fingers, I don't know what you did, but.
No, so we did, um, we did give you guys kind of a very abbreviated notice on January 19th and January 22nd. We met with four of you. Mr. Easter had to cancel. He may not have known. Um, but I did let you guys know when I met with you back in January that we did have something coming. There was going to be an appropriation, but at that point, we did not know the dollar amount, because we were really hoping we could bring that $50,000 way down, and we did. But this was your first formal notice, was May 2nd, when we sent the formal appropriation request over.
It didn't
boils down to, we don't make this happen.
If we don't make this happen, we lose EMS, EMS services in Amelia County tomorrow.
Okay. Any more questions?
Where do we find the money? We're already in the red for this year. And Stephanie brought, since the last meeting, Stephanie brought anything to help alleviate any of this, or?
Yeah, it's pretty small.
Not enough to cover it?
No.
I know if it's not my chicken, okay, I can't pay for it. I can't sign off the word. In fact, I'm not trying to be against it. I just don't know where the money's coming from.
I mean, we still have some in reserves. We were projected to go into reserves, which we don't want to.
Well, we got heavy EMS.
If, if the notices going out and stuff, sorry, think, think the money that she's now collecting will cover it? I know it's not in yet, but.
It might.
Do you have a feeling on that time?
Oh, that's a tough one. Still about 42 grand a week. It's, it's about it.
Nobody got ideas coming?
I say we just have to add it on top of the reserves, because.
I agree.
You do, y'all do realize if, if we don't do this, EMS cover stops.
Is the money that she's hopefully going to be collecting, is that going, is that our account for work? Or is that something we could put toward if it comes in?
There was a bunch of items last year.
Mm-hmm.
And that's short. About 190.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Still have six weeks to collect on that. I'm hoping to get about $90,000 in the first quarter. Was really rough. Um, we are working with, it started with 11 different insurance providers. It's about 19 now. Each one of those is an individual process that just took a lot longer to get the ball rolling on some than others. Um, but it's slowly increasing now. We had some state changes last month that caused a technical glitch that put revenue recovery way down, but we don't lose it. We're just delayed in receiving it. Um, and we're also working on some things to potentially increase revenue recovery next year.
That was another question. Can you explain why it's difficult to get that, why it's revenue recovery is kind of more difficult than it should be?
So revenue recovery is always going to be hard. Um, people see bills and they say, "Oh, my gosh, they charged me $1,200 for a transport. They're making a fortune." What they don't realize is we charge you $1,200 for a transport. Medicare pays us $400, and then the rest is written off. Same thing with Medicaid. Most insurance companies do not pay out in full. They have contractual allowances that limit what we actually receive. We charge the Medicare allowable rate, which is put out annually, but we don't necessarily, rarely do we receive all of that money back. It's very rare to see the bill paid in full. Um, and if you've got an uninsured patient, then you're likely to never see any of it. Um, so although we bill out a million and a half dollars in transports a year, we're only getting back a third of that.
Which is not that different than any other county's situation, or any other provider of ambulance services.
Correct.
Yeah.
People don't understand.
Right. They don't understand. They see that big bill and they, they think that we're making a lot of money. We bill what we're allowed to bill by Medicare, but we in no way, shape, or form actually receive that.
There's no way. It's weakened it. It's kind of stuck, I guess.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I think you do have some good ideas, though, in your letter. Some, well, I say some good ideas, and there's some, some ideas that you're not necessarily excited about, and I'm not sure that I am either, but, you know, about, maybe I should say, ideas that we need to look into. Maybe instead of good ideas that we need to look into, because just the way we are and the way the future is shaping up too. Um, I think it could be good for us, once we get past this budget, getting approved for us to do a workshop or, or something, you know, a public session, and, um, discuss some of those ideas. And, and, you know, let, let the public see what the options are as well. And I know the letter is public today, it's in our packet, but, you know, let the public work through some of this with us, too. I mean, this is a challenge. It's not just Amelia facing, but really nationwide, and there's, there's not phenomenal options out there.
Right. And, you know, the, the problem with EMS, fire, all of it, we're basically an insurance policy. And when you need us, you really hope for air, and when you don't need us, you really hate to pay for it.
Yeah.
And yesterday, they hardly had any calls, and it was a sad day where we're paying out a whole lot of money per hour to not need anyone. And Friday night, when they had five calls overnight, we were really happy we had two crews there. And it's just a hard gamble, you, you know. We are right there on the edge of needing a third crew during peak hours. We're trying to hold that off. We're working on recruitment and retention, some with the rescue squad and the, and the fire department, trying to keep it at bay as long as we can, but it's just, it's difficult, and the requirements that are being put on the volunteers by the state now are, are really heavy. You can't volunteer like you could 15 years ago. It's a lot of classes and a lot of reserving, and it's hard to get people to sign up for that.
I think that's a really good point, Kimberly. I mean, you now have more inside knowledge from my wife trying to volunteer, and even as an RN, you know, what a burden it would be for her to do it. We talked about the volunteers decreasing. It's not just people not wanting to. It is the requirements that are on them. It is a state, I think it's a state problem, uh, that's been forced, enforced there as well, and state problem also that's forcing some of these additional costs and the medications that you're talking about in this as well. And maybe that's a good, maybe we need to have some meetings. Uh, some of us board members sit down with some of our state representatives as well, and let them see kind of the realities of what this makes us face as counties as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Uh, but I think David's right on the funding for now. I mean, it's not like there's a real option for this. Uh, and I do think this budget cycle has shown us to citizens do understand the need and the value of these services. And while no one likes taxes, they do understand taxes are necessary to pay for valuable services like this. Um, fire, sheriff, school, et cetera.
Well, um, I don't know if I can make this motion or not, but I move that we cover it as much as we can, looking at a bi-weekly basis or whatever, with the money that hopefully Stephanie is recovering from our meeting, and whatever isn't met, we can take out of the ready date fund or whatever we call it. But does that sound like something we can do?
Sounds like an option. We'll mostly go fund it.
Yes, but.
And we go hope that we get the, the money coming in from the habit of, we help, we replace some of them.
Yeah. So, if that's acceptable, that's my motion.
You want to restate that?
I move that we cover the, I don't know what the number is.
These
500, 200, $3,500.
$3,500. Uh, that we cover as best as we can, and that we we have to, we'll go into the reserves to take the rest of it.
Okay.
There's laws. Okay, give a thumbs up.
We're here.
It got staticky there, but I'm good.
All right, most of the funds are funded, 230,000, $500 appropriation to, to help fund the EMS for the remainder of the year. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I got something to add to that. Um, we need to be kept updated periodically on the, uh, how the funds are coming in or whatever, or Stephanie and all. I mean, you know, don't want to wait three, four months and then go, "We don't have it." You, you follow what I'm trying to say?
I get it, man.
Okay.
I just check it every week.
That's fine.
So I'm sending it to you.
Yeah.
But we can have her send it either way.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so we can keep track, and they say we on course to, you know, wipe this out. If not, don't want to be surprised down the road that we can't do it or whatever.
Okay. Motion for to make this appropriation, all in favor raising hand. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, because of this disaster of budget process, I know we're going to probably look at this at least quarterly from here on out. Uh, if you see anything coming, please give us a heads up.
Absolutely.
Eight months in advance.
Kent and I have kind of slowly started incorporating it into his quarterly report, so we'll get a little happier with it in that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the second thing, and one more thing of housekeeping, the Salus Creek reenactment, entertainment permit. Mr. Dean, you want to explain that to us?
Yes, sir. It's a predated, reenactment of a few battles in the area. And, uh, believe, let me see, the dates been pulled up. The dates are September 20th, 21st, and 22nd at Salus Creek State Park. Everybody's reviewed it, signatures from all respective department heads, ready for y'all's approval.
Holy moses. Field days of the past.
Same wiki. Too many people they gonna have there?
Have.
See, about a thousand a day, and did meet with Kent. And because they are not having any alcohol, I do not believe they need a standby ambulance, whereas there will be an ambulance sitting at field days, at least for one of the days. Yeah. Oops, sorry. Luckily, they're on two separate sides of the county, so traffic-wise, they shouldn't enter, have conflict, but EMS provision-wise.
But it's probably less of a conflict than the what we approved at the fair and the, um, truck pull on the same, same night. They're right beside each other.
Okay. Mr. Bullis, please.
I'll make a motion and approve the Sailor Creek State Park reenactment, September 20th, 21st, to 22nd.
Okay, motion on the front of the permit, event permit, for Salus Creek. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. All right, this last thing was the six-year plan. VDOT rule rustic six-year plan. Judge DeGee, put a copy of that?
Yes.
And it looks like to me the only road that kind of qualified was Oslo Lane. And we currently don't have all the funds in there to do that move. I know we just did some grading on it, made a lot of people happy. Well, we're, we're at this, we'll bundle this after we do the budget, but I was under the impression that we were going to hold off for another year to get some more funds in the, in the basket from VDOT before we pulled the trigger. What's everybody think?
Sound like good idea.
Yeah, I think the estimated cost for the paving was around $200,000. And we had $30,000 or $81,000 in the fund.
I think for, just for Oslo right now, we only have $30,000. Yeah, we only have $30,000 this year.
So we'll, we'll pick that up. We've got the resolution wrote, or we can change it, but we will discuss this further in the June meeting. Are we fine to advertise it as holding off? Do we get some more funds?
My understanding, I thought, and maybe Brady can follow, but I thought we still needed to get it designated onto the plan, but I mean, the plan would show it several years out when the funds would be there. I mean, VDOT's not going to work on it until the funds are there anyway, but I thought we still needed to get it added to the plan.
That's, that's what the resolution says.
Oh, when you said "hold off," I, I guess I didn't understand what you were saying then.
Yeah, I said it wrong. Hold off on doing it right now. Put it into plan until the funds reach a level.
Oh, yeah, because we can't do it until the funds are there. Yeah, okay.
Plan builds the fund.
Right.
Six-year plan builds the fund through planning all the way to construction.
So that's what the resolution says, that this will be added, so. All right, we'll advertise that. All right, folks, that's the scary little housekeeping meeting. It brings us to the budget. Folks, we had a public meeting last week. I wouldn't say we had approval on the budget, but I'm, we didn't have a whole lot of opposition to the proposed budget. So what's the mail we're going to do?
Go ahead.
I think, I think we hit.
No, go ahead. I'll say that to you.
No, I'm clear.
Uh, I was going to say, I was really trying to rack my brain on some other ways to possibly get it down a penny or two. Um, and seeing that we're still on the red, I might have to still throw my ideas around anyway, just to try to get it in the black. Um, and one of them was, uh, $1,200 bonus instead of the COLA. That, that would benefit, it would help out more on the lower end of the scale than the upper end, but at the same time, I don't know what that would do for us, helping us.
Be from what I had looked at there, be just under $39,000 of savings. Doing a $1,200 flat raise for all employees versus a 3% COLA for all employees.
So that would take $39,000?
Just, just under $39,000.
And the other idea, unless you want to talk about that first? You want to talk?
Go ahead.
The other idea is with the understanding, hear me out first. Um, look at the school at 1,500, with them knowing that if they have 1,600 students, we'll find the money. But to get us through this, we look at 1,500 students instead of 1,515, and what would that roughly bring us to, you know?
I'm not sure what that figure would be. I defer Mr. Trump in terms of the actual number on, maybe he has 1,500.
Well, nobody wants to hear it, but at the same time, we are in the red, so, um, not taking away, I'm sure we would find the money if we had to, if they had 1600 students, or 1,516. Uh, that was a built-in cushion for them, but like I said, we are in the red, so. Do you want to give us a rough number? Well, I, is it changed from the last time you gave me that number?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Oh, we'll go back to the other topic while you're doing that. So I spoke, y'all, sir.
All right. Well, being that, uh, Mr. Morris brought that up, I have been looking at what the state of Virginia says, and they project 1,458 being fully funded. And that figures would come out to what the sheet says at $6,828,048, according to the state of Virginia. Plus, with the 91,174, but we can always give them some more if we miss it or whatever. But the state says they are happy, according to this chart, with that figure. And, and the situation that we're in, I don't think that we should be having money just sitting out there and having some of the services and all, and different departments in the county having, say, extra. We don't know, because this is all projected, just like what they're saying now is projected. The state of Virginia says something totally different. And they are satisfied with this, fully funded. And like I said, and what Biggie said, we can always come back and add to it if that's the case.
Well, well, Mr. Trump is you don't want to add, do we want to? You want to go to your first topic and just settle that one?
Okay, I know where it's standing.
I, I stand with the 3% COLA raise.
I do as well. I mean, this board wasn't willing to cut our pay to save any amount of money at all, even a dollar. I don't think we should go cutting the employees' raises that would be the same amount that all government employees across the state are planning to get.
Next. Who did all the money?
Well, I think the $1,200 added to it is a fair amount, being that whether you make $5,000 or $50,000 per year, everyone gets the same, because everyone goes to the gas station, everyone goes to the grocery store, everyone has the same increase. When someone's making $60,000, $70,000, that three and a half percent is quite much more than the little man on the totopole. Yet, they both spend the same for their groceries and et cetera. And it's it's not that much difference on a $40,000 salary. It's just several hundred dollars.
I think it helps the little man.
And now, just what she said, the little guy is the one who needs more help out here in this economy than the ones on a higher pay scale.
Exactly.
I guess I'm just having trouble with, in general, with, we broadly have heard for the last several weeks that citizens feel like we're in the right direction. They value the services, willing to pay the tax increases. What are we trying to accomplish then today with just the cuts? I mean, the cuts to schools? This is, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that got the people so riled up last year that citizens don't want.
We're still in the red with the tax increases across the board and everything else. We're still over $100,000 in the red. So it's either you can pull it from somewhere, or we can do some reductions. We also asked to listen to the citizens for months about this, and we did have one bring up a
for months about this, and we did have one bring up a comment the Wednesday about furloughs. Volunteer days, furlough days. Is that an option? I mean, it's, depends on how many people do it. I wouldn't foolish it on anybody, but if somebody wanted to take it, it's available. I do know some people would take it.
Well, I don't see the harm in offering that, I mean, at all.
But for the schools. If their ADM comes, comes in higher than what's projected, they will get the extra money at that time. They're just not getting it right now.
That's very difficult. It's very difficult to go add those things in the middle of a school year. So you're talking about, in many cases, if you start cutting that dramatically to the, to the numbers you said, Dexter, you're talking about they could have to actually be cutting employees, and then you're going to have to add them in the middle of the year. It's, it's, that's not practical.
The state says that's not. I heard school board members say is very willing to be fully funded to get the state funds. This is what the state says they will be fully funded. I mean, we can't make money growing trees.
But that's not the number to be fully funded. You're, you're talking about estimates of ADM.
But they have estimate too, so what's the difference?
Right. Did you, I mean, they went through an entire exercise for us of why the state's estimates have historically been wrong. Why would, we're going to trust the state's broad estimates versus the accurate estimates of the local, at the local level? I mean, this is why people say you're against the schools, and then you say you're not, but this is a good example of why. You're not trusting the schools who have the full-time employees to do the work.
For from, we'll speak now.
Yes, I'm working on putting those figures in the cap tool in my enter that was not cooperating very well. I didn't have that figure prepared for y'all. Um, but on the ADM, that is something I did want to share, why we're projecting where we are. Um, our kindergarten enrollment for the beginning of next year, that's the next class, we don't have data on yet, but the enrollment figure, last we checked, was a hundred and three students have registered for kindergarten with Mid County Public Schools. Our outgoing senior class is a hundred and two students. We have a very small senior class leaving. And those are two data points we actually can see at this point where we have an incoming class that's about equal to our outgoing class. As you know, of our ADM currently is fifteen fifteen for this fiscal year, and as I believe, I know I shared with Mr. Robinson and Mr. Morris after a meeting previously and have spoken on some of the reasons why we don't go with that state ADM figure straight from the Weldon Cooper Census Information at the OBA is if you go back to FY twenty-one, the initial calculations tool template at this time of year for that, for that year has sixteen fifteen and ninety-five, twenty-nine five, sixteen, sixteen sixteen. That year ended at fifteen sixty-five. A difference of fif- fifty-one students, different. The next year, the cap tool, this is FY twenty-two. That same cap tool had the next year projected fifteen seventy-seven, we came to fifteen sixty-four, so we got closer. In FY twenty-three, especially since schools reopened and kind of started to utilize operations. The initial cap tool for FY twenty-three has at fifteen twenty-three point eight students. We ended that year at fifteen eighty-two. It was a difference in the other direction of fifty-eight students. And FY twenty-four, for this year, when they initially projected the cap tool, this year, that just ended, or our data ended at fifteen fifteen, this year is projected at fourteen eighty. And that's why, when we're looking at our actual own enrollment, we budgeted, remember, at fifteen forty for this year, and we've had to reduce. Just this last October, and I think this is the most shocking piece of it, during this last school year that ended at fifteen fifteen, the cap tool had us at sixteen oh three. They were wrong in the positive by over eighty-eight students. This is why using their projections, I understand you might not want to listen to ours, and I, I tell you, ours are not perfect. But it is a projection, and what we are trying to do is be, we feel like we're being conservative and reasonable, saying that this is where we are. We know the outgoing students, we know the incoming students. That's all we know at this point. Which, but those two data points tell us that fifteen fifteen is a reasonable place to start.
And would we come up with fifteen fifty?
That's what I'm working on just this exact minute.
How many kids are even junior, in junior class, or in the seniors this year?
That'd be a separate piece. But I'll get out of the way and brook on this, not standing at the podium, but I'll be back in just a few minutes, I promise. I'll add that to tears.
Yeah, so that is a bit of a question. Any more questions?
Yeah.
Well, you're trying to state then all of us to make the more than under is to make.
Which direction we're going, I'm waiting for Mr. Trump, and we're going to go, let's go, let's finish this thing with the COLA, maybe we'll sit down. I'm, I'm not in favor of the bonus.
How about that? I'll just make a mention. I move that we set up doing the COLA to a twelve hundred dollar bonus.
Do it as a COLA. It'll still, it'll still roll in, that's just what the about they get, is twelve hundred dollars. Get it every, another wording, go ahead. I'm calculating, which is second his head.
I would caution.
I can't do it a percentage that way.
I would caution making twelve hundred dollars across the board, anything other than an annual payment. Because we've, we've gone through a significant amount of work in the last couple of years with the pay plan and getting the ranges and things straight. Uh, twelve hundred dollars, if you make that annual, that's going to end up compressing things.
Yep.
I think I'll just, I would, if, if that's the thing to do, I would suggest making it annual, see where you are next year.
So I'm moving to make an annual twelve hundred dollar bonus.
One time.
One time.
How many people we talking about? Not talking about the school, you're not talking about social services, just talking about the people that work.
Full-time, full-time county police.
Yep.
County-supported.
Yes.
So when the, when the fact is to make sure we're talking straight, any, any local government employee that's funded through the comp board, we're not talking about that, we're just talking about the employees.
Right, so, so remember, that will make despair, it will be disparate impact. You'll have some sheriff's office employees and others get the three percent, and some only get twelve hundred.
So then, I guess you're going to prorate the twelve hundred dollars. If you've got an employee that's fifty percent top board and fifty percent local, they would get the prorated share of twelve hundred.
Just, just remember, this is why we talked about this in the beginning, it is going to create resentment among, amongst the employees.
I think we ought to go with what the state's doing to three percent. But I'm like, I'm just one person. The school is doing a three percent. It just makes, makes it fair across the board, and that's my opinion.
Mr. Robinson, answer your question. When you factor in the, just the county-supported salaries full-time, and you do not factor in the, the vacant positions that the board has frozen, the three percent COLA would be a hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars of an impact, so it'd be a hundred and eighteen thousand, roughly. If you were to do, uh, twelve hundred an employee, if you first just adding the hundred percent funded or hundred percent supported county employees, that would be seventy-six thousand, eight hundred. If you add in the additional eleven employees that are county-supported, but do not make over the amount necessary to get twelve hundred from their state raise, so that would be basically employees that are state employees and their state support is under forty thousand dollars. That's an additional twenty-five forty-two. Twenty-five forty-one, forty-five, but you could just put twenty-five forty-two. So you add the seventy-six eight hundred with the twenty-five forty-two. When you subtract that from the one seventeen nine fifty-three, it's just under thirty-nine thousand dollar savings. Now, it does, of course, if you were to run it as a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, and factored into their permanent pay, it would, of course, create some slight compression with your uh, higher-paid employees and your lower-paid employees for this year. Next year, you don't have to continue a COLA that's equal rate, you could change at that time. To show the difference, a three percent COLA on a hundred thousand dollar employee would be three thousand dollars of increase for that employee, where a forty thousand dollar employee at three percent would be twelve hundred dollars.
But the state-funded positions will continue to get the three percent increase.
State-funded positions that have salaries over forty thousand dollars would get the three percent increase, so technically those individuals would get more than their county-supported counterparts.
Yes. Who may be doing the exact same job. Well, not may, but they are.
I mean, personally, the twelve hundred dollars negatively affects me because I'm on the other side of the, other side of the barrier.
That's why I won't do it.
So it's personally, that's how that affects me, but in terms of a suggestion, I think, I, I do not like the terminology, this is my honest opinion, of a cost of living adjustment. If it's a three percent raise, it's a three percent raise. If it's a cost of living adjustment, a three thousand dollar cost of living adjustment for one employee versus a twelve hundred dollar cost of living adjustment for another employee, we can all agree, everybody's living goes up the same. Your gas goes up the same, your food goes up the same, your insurance goes up the same, pretty much across the board. So either call it a three percent raise for all employees, or do a cost of living adjustment.
It's a raise. You're distinguishing it between a performance raise, that's the difference. You're trying to clarify that it's not performance-based.
It's government terminology to get it passed through the. Sorry to be blunt.
Your wording will work if you want it to, to be inconsistent across. You, you're going to go talk to like the deputies who do the, if you're willing to go talk to the deputies who do the exact same jobs the other deputies, but some will get only twelve hundred and some are going to get three percent. I mean, I think that's a that's a battle you're willing to take on.
So county employees never got a raise that the state employees didn't get?
We have not done them inconsistently, no.
I'm split, to be honest with you. I mean, it's not but thirty-nine thousand dollars.
It is thirty-nine thousand.
Actually, not, it's not a full thirty-nine thousand. That's, you're, you're, you're doing the total, you're doing the total, and it's less than that, because I don't think you're taking out the amounts that won't be able to be reduced because they are state employees, right?
Well, with a two percent.
And then the twelve.
Brady, you just did the total difference between three percent and twelve hundred.
You won't be able to. And by employee, there's eleven employees that are county-supported, whose state three percent would not get them to twelve hundred dollars. That would be the locality matching those employees up to the twelve hundred.
Okay.
And then there's, um.
It's two percent. I guess still about the same savings, isn't it?
I think two percent comes out the same, but I can do the math right now.
You'd, you're going to still be in the same situation, though. You'll have other employees that get three percent.
So that would be seventy-eight thousand, six thirty-five. The other is a two percent in terms of its total impact. Your twelve hundred dollars was seventy-six eight hundred plus twenty-five forty-one, which is seventy-nine, three forty-one, so two percent would save you a few hundred dollars compared to the twelve hundred. But again, compared to the three percent, it saves you thirty, thirty-nine thousand.
I'll say it again, I'm for the three percent COLA raise. And I'll say, I'm, I'm going to add this to it. I've been in public service my whole life. I never hit a gentleman, I knew there was a gun on the side. But we got these deathings out there on the street. One of them's going to get three percent if they call from the state. The other one should get the same amount. Because I don't want anything that mind other than doing what they need to do. Even wonder that this guy, well, he gets paid less than I get, I'm going to let him go first. I am not getting on board with it. Y'all, show hands.
On the floor, I can call for the question.
All right, let's call for the question. We haven't gotten motions throughout this budget.
I've been in motion ten minutes ago.
I mean, we haven't done motions during the budget workshops. But if there's a motion, say. Can we state your motion?
I move that we do a twelve hundred dollar bonus, a one-time uh, one-time twelve hundred dollar bonus instead of the three percent COLA.
Okay. What should we want to do?
Can he clar- can he, can I ask for clarification on that, because we just, we just went through a whole discussion of how that doesn't work? Can he clarify that it's only for those that are not funded by the state?
I was, you know, for those who are funded by the state. Make it better? And, and what was the word you used for equalization of cost that fifty-fifty people or whatever?
Pro-rating.
Pro-rating, and prorate the ones that are partially done locally, partially done by the state. I know that's a hot spot, but, uh, I'll allow it to work a bit better.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. The best I can tell is to do a twelve hundred dollar bonus to the students versus a three percent COLA raise, and have it prorated to the ones that get paid partially from each place.
Thank you, that's much better.
Any more discussing? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. You got to vote, y'all.
No, they don't. You don't, if you don't have a majority, it doesn't pass. That's, that's Robert's rules.
So, Robert will go first.
Motion fails. Move on.
So you accomplished nothing. See, you can't adopt a budget, so they, the, uh, motion, I don't think it's something that you couldn't change, the results of it, I don't think it's something you can't change at your next meet. You have to go a full seven days before you adopt a budget, and I would like to have Jeff's opinion as to whether a motion about a certain segment of it before the seven days is something to see if it will stand anyway. So what we're doing is trying to talk with each other, get consensus about different things we want to do and be even more prepared when we come back in some future time to adopt the budget.
I'm still split either way, to be honest with you. That's, that's the problem.
Same view.
I mean, you gotta realize, I'm from the other end of the spectrum here. I'm from the real world, not government handout.
Yeah.
That's where I'm at, but if if it's a true cost of living, then it should be the same for everybody. So which, will we smoke it with the C O L O? Or is it, will be a Or is it will be a raise? So what is it gonna be? Cause if it's cost of living, then it should be fair across the board. If everybody's getting a raise, then just say it. Everybody to get a three percent raise. Because something is always bound their knee with the total, because like I said, I'm from the other end of the spectrum. Everything's up here, everybody gets to hit. But when you go into a recession, it's not like you give anything back. So is it a raise or is it a cost of living? State causing a cost of living. So that's what we gotta decide. That's what I said the other day.
We never have to call it cost of living, but the problem is cost of living never goes down to your point, so that's why it never gets released, yeah.
Well, it goes, Bill.
Think the way our comp plan would consider it, this right here is a cost of living increase. If you are efficient enough to keep your job, you will get a cost of living increase to keep up with the cost of living. If you excel at your job, you will get a performance boost, you will move up a step.
Okay, but the pro guy that's forty thousand dollars that goes gets to take a guess, it costs him the same per guy as it does somebody else that's making six figures. That's where my problem lies.
This is just life. I mean, it's no different than the social security raise goes in percentages as well and say the same thing, it's just the way finances work. I I'm just saying it's the same, the way the world works. We don't get to change everything about the world here.
We can come back to that, right?
Mr. Trump, you have anything for us?
Yes, I do. Um and actually, gentlemen, one thing about this is at fifteen fif- at fifteen hundred, as requested, the actual local contribution required that I project at this point is seven million one hundred fifteen thousand six hundred ninety-seven, a savings of just about sixteen thousand dollars. That information, um that also comes with a state funding difference at fifteen hundred to Mr. Easter's point of a hundred and sixty thousand nine hundred and two dollars.
Right, because, because that higher number is what the state thinks we need to be.
Yeah, because of the difference between our local percentage, that local composite index, that sets how much we have to fund versus the state, since we are on the much lower end of that. It means that for every dollar cut off of that local appropriation, it's significant state funding loss. Um if it was a matter of just shaving sixteen thousand dollars, that's is something that we can always look at, how can we tighten up and be efficient? One thing you wanna be clear while presenting is this is the state, this is our projection of the state mandated match to access all state funds. And if we're funded below that minimum number, that's not one dollar less and we lose one dollar here in a matching number from the state. You guys, y'all know how grants work with grant matches. You either meet the match or you don't. And if you don't match it by a hundred thousand dollars or by one dollar, you don't meet the match, you don't qualify for the funds. We're projecting fifteen fifteen at that time. One reason why I keep saying projection of the cap tool is as you all know from the email I sent this afternoon with our updated request for consideration, is actually an increase from the county. Because the way the state is working with their new budget and their new sales tax projections, that actually increases even with all other things being equal. That thus local and state contributions for basic aid that are going to increase. That there's a natural balance between those two things, where sales tax is offset by basic aid, and basic aid has a local component, sales tax does not. So if you wanna send people across the Virginia out to buy more and more and more stuff, that'd be awesome. But if sales tax goes down in their projection, the local contribution goes up. And that was, I'll be honest, that's not something I was anticipating having happen with the final state budget. I was pretty amazed at how much state funding did not change from the conference committee to the compromise budget they just passed. But once again, just like ADM, enrollment is out of our hands, state funding and their limits is out of our hands. I'm just trying to give you all the most honest projection I have. But Mr. Easter was accurate. If we're not funded at that point, we have to reduce state funding. The state funding loss is gonna be considerable. And the things we'd have to take out, like, would we rather fund, no refunding teachers for sure now, or get the same amount of money and say we have to add that amount of money and then having to spend it on, well, we need a school bus, we'd like to buy a school bus later, another one. But if you wanna fund people that can help our students every day, then meeting the match and keeping that state funding intact where we believe it's going to be. Um and trust me, I'm not inflating anything. I'm trying to give you the real numbers of why we project ourselves to where we are, why we use different figures than what the state projects.
Did you get your answer to a junior class?
No, not, that won't take me a moment.
You said that the state said that the state sales tax is down?
The state projection, if you look at the state budget, the amount of money allocated for our sales tax revenue for the schools decreased from the conference committee budget to the final state budget in the section for education. So basically, their projection, remember, they're basing their sales tax projections at points in time through the year. They had an initial sales tax projection in December with the governor's budget. When they redid the conference committee budgets, they had more figures for March. And actually, the reason why it dropped, if y'all paid attention to the legislative process for the state, one of the things that Governor Yonkin promised he would not do is raise taxes. One of the major taxes that was proposed was an increase of sales tax into areas where it doesn't already apply. When you, digital services like Netflix, all those online subscriptions, state sales tax doesn't currently apply to those figures. And that was baked into the conference committee budget, so when the final budget passed and those sales tax increases and changes were taken out of the final budget, sales tax revenue decreased along with it.
How does sales tax decrease when everything you buy? It's costing you a lot more. I don't buy that at all.
This is, this is a projection a couple of months apart. Where it's about what are people purchasing, and this was specifically tied to legislative action where a new tax was proposed. And the new, and the conference, the cap tool is out right now, the most recent one, has that new tax proposal in it's baked into its revenue projection. It's just like a business. If you plan to offer a new service that's gonna bring in more money, and then you realize you can't offer that service, what happens? That new money that you projected also goes away.
Yeah, it's not less, it's not less, it's not less sales tax than historically generated, it's less than they were projecting because they thought they were gonna pass a new legislation.
So how much did your request go up at fifteen fifteen versus before?
The email that I sent today had the new request, and once again, this is my projection, it could be off by a little bit. Is seven million two oh nine eight eighty-seven. It's up about seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-six nine thirty-five.
Thanks, sir. But once again, as we said, the state has told us the cap tool should be coming on May thirtieth. Or sorry, if you don't have it sooner, I'd love to give you something concrete and say, this is the state document, this is how you do it, this is where we are. So that is not in our hands.
How much bigger is this red number than what we're?
Another seventy-seven thousand dollars, so there'll be a hundred and seventy-seven.
Which is not the message I wanted to send y'all, trust me. So that number on the junior class currently, current enrollment, the senior class is a hundred and two, junior class is a hundred and fifteen. Sophomores, that's a big one, that's a hundred and forty-three. Our smallest class right now, let's see, is our rising sixth graders at eighty-five. But we're a really small county with a really small sample size. One year, things can change a lot just with simple enrollment changes. We don't have the margin that other counties do. But right now, we have an in, our income projection and our outgoing projection are pretty much level, which is why we're pretty much level.
Sounds like to me states doing the same thing they always do, dang with the carrot, but you never forget it.
Can't argue that.
Just like the PPTRA.
So even at the fifteen hundred, that's closer to what you had originally, right? How much difference is that?
To fifteen hundred, I think Mr. Trump had said it's about sixteen thousand less than what we're currently at. He had said, with the updated state information, fifteen hundred ADM would be seven one one five. We, the the budget was proposed at seven, at a transfer to the schools, seven one thirty-two nine five two.
Seven one thirty-two what?
Nine five two. That's seven million forty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for operations and ninety-one thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars for textbook. With the latest state up information, to fully fund them at the projected fifteen fifteen ADM, they would need an additional seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars of funds for a total of seven billion two hundred nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Talk.
Well, I'm not really sure what we can do based on what Taylor said or too, like, we can't make a change to do anything today.
Yeah, but we can propose something for a technical.
I'll make the suggestion. I know they don't wanna hear, but I was like, we need to send it to fifteen hundred number. That's closer to our original number. We're in the red, we ain't got it.
Well, I, I, again, I know if they get the numbers up, we'll find the money.
What's the difference in what you just said, they will find the money, and what I said, if we I said, we'll find the money if they get the numbers up.
We just, we just, yeah, we just talked about how we gonna find two hundred thousand dollars instead of having, like, somebody have a heart attack.
And we don't.
So how we go, what, what's the plan of finding? And that's what the question, yeah. Where we gonna find two hundred? Where we gonna find us?
Yeah, I feel less good about promising we'll find money in the future, yeah.
So.
We don't already budget.
Watch what you say.
Man, I understand that we're trying to be conservative, but we're trying to tighten up everywhere, so hopefully.
See, you're in a, you're in a difficult position we've not been in before. Up until, you know, the recent past, we'd have a undesignated fund balance of twenty percent or so. And we're not they, that un- that undesignated fund balance has been used up. So it's more, it's more and more important to find the revenue. Or either cut the expenditure because you're not as able to adapt to a midstream significant changes you would have been in the past.
Your number next to six eight, right?
Uh, that's what the state has to be fully funded, six eight two eight oh forty-eight. And plus a ninety-one one seventy-four. Which comes to six million nine hundred and nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars. That's what the state says to, for them to be fully funded. Now, you know, that's a projection, just like they'll project. If we don't have the money, what are we to do? Just what David said. Where's it gonna come from? Uh David, got it down in the earlier conversation, but we've spent significant money on projects in the last year. We've got radio project finishing out, we'll have ten million dollars worth of invested in new infrastructure and things. There's certainly no reason why we couldn't go to B M L Vaco Finance and convert it to a series of debt. That would free up some cash. David said he doesn't borrow money, and I certainly understand that, but that's something you could do.
There, there's not a transfer in this budget either. We also talked about transferring some money out of the decal fund. If August changed, we'll transfer some from a, from a C I P. Well, we're gonna have to try some, transfer.
Why are they not there? Those were things we'd agreed we would do.
Isn't that what got us here?
No, like the decal fee, I mean, the decal. Those aren't, those not, that's not what got us here.
The proposed budget that was advertised had no, had, did not have a number of transfer from the road decal fund nor from the C I P fund as it was an undetermined number of what the board wanted to transfer. The board had discussed transfer in all the road decal fund, and then there was a a discussion at the meeting about moving into the C I P fund to not spend all the money that may be needed for future road projects, cause if a road there's been issue with the road, so staff prepared a budget that has zero fund transfer except from the E D A fund, which specifically goes towards the Economic Development Department. And that's a standard fund transfers for several years. Now, the information that I have provided you all, of course, is the same information that was advertised, shows a one hundred thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollar projected general fund deficit. However, that does not include some unaccounted revenue. For example, there's a hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars of savings from frozen positions. So if you take that hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-three against the one hundred thousand seven thirty-nine projected deficit, that puts you in the black. Staff also did not include all the miscellaneous fee increases as it's a little bit difficult to project in terms of how they're gonna affect participation and numbers. That includes land use, parcel rec, dog licenses. So there's, but based on our calculations, that could be about forty thousand dollars. So that would take you to just under, just about eighty thousand in the black. And that is the savings from the uh unaccounted positions and the um savings or the additional revenue from some of the fee increases. Lastly, the personal property projection from staff is very conservative this year. The personal property projection is four million seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. When the advertisement was run, the staff took the total collected as of the most recent financial report from confirmed actuals, which was the end of March quarter. And that, at that time, staff took that actual revenue, multiplied it by five percent because the tax increase is about a five percent increase at twenty cents. Which brings you to that four seven seven. Stephanie's most recently provided information, which was provided to you all prior to the board meeting last week, shows that the treasurer's office has collected four point nine million Shows that the treasurer's office has collected four point nine million in personal property. If you were to add five percent to that, that would put us at five point one six three three four five, so five million one hundred and sixty three thousand three hundred and forty five dollars. So that's about a three hundred eighty five thousand dollar difference from our projection. We can increase our projection, or we can. Stay in knowing that there's gonna be potential unaccounted revenue in our favor. If you total that against the projected general fund fund balance deficit. That would give you a general fund fund balance, including the unaccounted revenue of four hundred and sixty five thousand to deposit. Now, our revenue projections. Have been a part of the issue um and the certainty and reliance on some of the information. That staff has received. And so as you all are very well aware, that issue has sort of been one of the myriad factors that resulted in this situation. So we're trying to be as conservative as possible across the board. This is an example of that.
Well, I don't understand this, right? That would be potential money if the school numbers went up, if we didn't account for that, correct? Some of that money that's in the flag, we could, we don't know, but we hope it could show up. That would be the difference if the school numbers went up later, correct or not correct?
It's it's additional funds the board could use at their disposal, so.
Yeah, I answered your.
But as Mr. Easter said, school has to make a budget and they have to budget to a to a certain figure. They can't budget to a hypothetical.
Same for us, right?
But you're also saying, I mean, that's very helpful, Brady. What you're also saying, and you've emailed this to us in the last several times, last few weeks, is that. You do expect this to be in the black even without those other things like the less conservative revenue number. Because you can't take into account the the freeze on the positions and those kind of things. So. I mean, I think it's important for us to acknowledge the hard work that's already been done and where we are today. We're at a budget. That is fully expected to be in the black. Yet is, as Brady said, extremely conservative with revenue, much more so than we've been before. That's a good thing. I don't, I breathe your. Explanations, Brad. I don't think you should go change it. I I mean, I honestly think we sit where we are and and watch how this this flows, and we just need to be more diligent about watching it month to month.
Or giggles.
Yeah.
Or giggles, can we put in the school at? The fifteen hundred students and the twelve hundred dollar bonus and see what it brings it down to?
Mr. Easter, I'm not sure if you can hear that, Mr. Morris.
I heard him.
So if we factor in bringing the schools to the new fifteen hundred projection, which I think Mr. Trump said was seven one one five. The savings of about sixteen thousand and then also factored in a twelve hundred dollar raise for all employees versus a three percent raise. Um county supported, all the other wording, that would bring your general fund. Deficit. Down about half, so sixteen thousand. Would bring it down fifty four five hundred, so you'd have about forty five thousand dollars, forty six thousand dollar projected general fund deficit. Not including the unaccounted revenue and savings.
Do you still have that county employee spreadsheet available?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me how many deputies we currently have?
Thirteen or fourteen?
Fourteen, fourteen deputies that are assigned under deputy one.
How many of the fourteen are state funded?
Actually, I'm gonna change that. It's fourteen plus three deputies that are sort of in like a leadership position in terms of their working title. The.
Seventeen.
Three. Leadership ones, of course, all have a a significant portion of their salary, state funded. Only one of them has a portion of their state, their state salary portion doesn't exceed the threshold, which would be forty thousand dollars. Um, one, two, three. Nine are fully locally funded, locally supported.
Nine actually.
Nine of this, actually, sorry, eleven of the seventeen are a hundred percent locally supported.
I'm okay, ba- back to my first question, though. How ma- how many are fully state funded?
Fully state funded are are.
Sixteen.
There's none fully state funded. So eleven are fully locally funded and then. One, two, yeah, the remaining have state support. Actually, sorry, one. Now, the other three are just have, they have states. So s- six with state support, eleven totally locally funded.
All right, and can you do the same thing for dispatchers?
All the, I believe our dispatchers are are titled under communication officer. Four of them are fully locally supported, one, which is in more of a, I think more of a leadership designation, is has state support.
I thought there were more dispatchers than that. Maybe you just send me that spreadsheet when you're done.
I'll send you the entire spreadsheet. Yes, sir.
I know you sent it to us earlier this year, and I was looking for it, and I can't find it. But I know you did, so.
And they're sort of all filtered through. It's not as easy to mine the information just like this, but let me see, there's one to, there's actually seven. Communication officer working title positions. Three of those have state support. Four of those are fully locally funded. But I'll send you that sheet.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Should let it hold up.
Yes, sir.
Well, while you're on the dispatchers, then maybe it'd be helpful just to read the names of the people then that are that would get the cut in that not get the full um. Amount with that proposal that the guys are working on here.
Hold on real quick.
Who are the ones that are just the ones that are fully, fully locally funded that would get less raised than their than their peers?
All right, um, I started saving that one sheet as a P D up to send to you guys, and so it's causing my computer to. Go through a loading process.
Oh, that's fine. I'm gonna want the Excel version, though, because I can't filter on the PDF.
See.
While we're waiting, let me ask you a question. How come on this P P T R A, how come the numbers from the state? Don't match what's in the book? I mean, I don't understand it.
I don't know.
I don't understand why the numbers can't match the cost of reward. I mean, software is software.
If it's in the book, it should be certified and it should be wrong.
Yeah, I don't understand.
I I do not know that. You working on some drivers?
Okay.
All right, so because of the partiality of the state funding. None of the communication officers with just the three percent on their state portion would get more than twelve hundred. So in that case, they would all be eating. And I'll give you an example. A communication officer that's making forty four thousand two hundred and ninety three dollars has a state supported portion of thirty thousand nine eighteen. And a locally supported of thirteen thousand three seventy five. So. At that rate, they would get nine hundred and twenty seven dollar raise from the state and then according to what Mr. Morris had requested, a pro rated portion for the remainder would go to bring them to the twelve hundred dollars. So for the communication officers, it's actually would would not be impactful in terms of differentiating them. Well, they would still get less than a three percent total because they're not getting three percent on the full local portion. And for example, it's costing the the one that makes the most would lose about two nineteen. The one that makes the least would lose about eighty two dollars. A year. Going to the twelve hundred round. And there's two of them, I think that would, two of them that would. Uh, lose two nineteen, a couple would lose about one forty, and then the lower salary individuals would lose one ninety and one eighty two respectively.
Well, you could always throw this out if you want to do it three percent total. Divide it up and make it the same across the board, since it's a cost of living increase. It's the same for everybody.
I don't think you can take the state's money that way.
I'm talking about state's money. I'm talking about local. Instead of one man getting three and another one getting eight. You take that number and you divide it against all the the employees and their percentage. I know it gets a little complicated, but even.
I couldn't give you that.
No, I'm not asking you to do it now. I'm just throwing that out. I didn't.
I hate saving them.
No, it's not saving them. It's just fair across the board.
What did you say about the technology?
I tell you, that's all I, that's been, that's in here. It's been rearranged.
I've said my piece. And then y'all debate this and figure out, I know where I'm at all. Y'all forget where y'all at being.
How you gonna turn that number black?
Well, Brady's already explained that it actually is black. It actually is black. He's explained that to us the last two meetings and in several emails.
If the revenue is right.
No, he explained, but his, no, that's, well, if the revenue is right, but he's saying even without counting extra revenue. Even with the conservative revenue and not factoring in any additional revenue, just with the freezing of the positions and the expected additional fee income, we're in the black.
I guess the biggest question is the school who's on the total.
I expressed my opinion. I think we leave both. I think we leave both exactly where they were for last week.
Well, that's with the increase in schools. Cool, what up?
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting any further. I'm not suggesting any further than what was advertised last week. There's too much uncertainty, even as um Mr. Trump said, they don't have the new calc tool from the state and others. We did the increased amount once already. I think we live with that.
Well, I agree with you. I mean, a tank of gas costs the same. I don't care who you are.
It does, because it's not a basis, and it needs to be the same across the board, period. It costs the same. Well, if you're in the bad, like it is, then can you take the, can we take the three percent? And split it equal across all the employees, whether they're half and half, it's whatever it is. Everybody gets an equal share. Instead of a a hundred thousand dollar man making three thousand dollars and a forty thousand dollar man makes a thousand. So we make it equal across the board.
So what you're saying is take the total pay. Multiply it with the, I mean, get the three percent on what the county's total payroll is, and then you divide the number of employees into that number.
And then the state workers get, they get their job like.
Yeah, they get their, yeah, if if they make fifty fifty, they don't give a half of what the others would get.
I think you can do it. I think the Taylor.
There are over thirty nine thousand dollars.
I still three percent.
Well, he's still spending the same amount of mon- yeah, in this case, he's still spending the same amount of money.
It is, three percent raise across the board. Compression, we're gonna be looking at the steps that got messed up.
Yeah, the compression hurts a lot.
Y'all know where I stand. So where y'all standing, that's fine. I mean, I can give a ball to anybody, but. My my question.
If you want to take the total three percent divided amongst the employees, make it a one time annual thing, we can do the math.
Well, not annual, you're just one time.
Yeah, well, that's right. Once, once.
Bonus.
No more. Just like we did the uh back in the early two thousand, we did the constitutional officers that way. Because the state went several years without any additional pay for constitutional officers. The county board supervisors gave them a one time amount. The following year, when they didn't get a raise, we came back and we gave them another one time amount, but it disappeared at the end of the budget. It did not, it did not have a life. It did not recycle.
Let's do something. We sit here all night looking at each other.
John, my office, yeah, I mean, to me, it's it's fair. That's the thing. It's fair. The gas is the same, the food is the same. We're gonna call it a cola. Then let's, let's do it fair.
Yeah. Well, if you're gonna call it a cola, then do it that it's three percent ac- across the board. That is the definition of a cola. You don't like the definition, but that is what a cola is.
Also, we're making it fair to everybody.
That is the definition of a cost of living increase. It's a percentage across the board. It is a percentage. You don't have to like it, but that is the definition.
No, I said, that's what you called it.
This is the definition.
John, we want, so we, we, we got, do we got something we can?
Yeah, he said they could do the numbers.
Three percent.
They could do the numbers.
I like that idea.
Okay, Joseph.
Why we've, why pay professional HR people to come in and tell us not to do this kind of thing if we're gonna ignore their advice? That's my opinion.
Yes, we need to talk. Mr. Gore. That's something he's gotta look at.
No, it's not illegal. There's not a legality issue.
So do we want to prepare that for? To vote on?
Leave him school where it's at?
Well, it doesn't change the budget, so you don't.
Yeah, the budget didn't change.
Budget doesn't change at all.
I'm asking you.
I'm asking, no, I gotta have a little input here. For Thursday to vote on a budget.
And I'm asking you, the school number went up. Do we leave it the same number that it went up to now, or do we knock it down to fifteen hundred? Which is more comparable to the original number they gave us.
Then I don't know. I don't know the end result of that discussion.
Well, I made a proposal and then no one. Responded to it.
Is there anything else we gotta discuss? Just pull out.
Um. Employees are texting in, though, concerns that bonus does not count as compensation in VRS. So you will be hurting them from a compensa-, from a retirement standpoint. I've got a couple different employees have already texted in. Concerns about that. Just so you know. I don't think that's something you care about, uh, because y'all have kind of already moved past concern for the employees, but, um. On a chair.
What do you know with schools?
I mean, like, Dave, you know where I stand. I mean. I think fifteen hundred is more comparable. Number that the prince may have.
What is the census? I understand, but local.
Can I ask you why, when you're already projected to be in the black? You're gonna then cut that further? Are you gonna then do an offsetting amount of lower the tax rate further?
Yeah, well, enough to do that.
Right, so what's the point? That's what I'm asking you. What's your point?
Uh, because we're in. Mass. And we're trying to fix it, so we'll raise it to the top. And that's built-in, and. We already said we try to find the money to number one up.
So just because you can. Brady, I think you can't, I think the constitutional officers have to increase by three percent. You can't do them the bonus, too.
What? We're not doing, that's the state.
Constitution's off. Who's the state?
We're doing the media employees. We're not doing no constitution.
Some of the constitutional officer employees handle them.
Yes, we, we only go through the local support part.
Think that is what we're referring to.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't, they get their three percent on the state part.
And so you still will, you still, you're still okay with the despair, disparity then for like the people who are mixed funding, they'll get their full three percent raise. And then other people won't get a raise, they'll just get a bonus. A one-time bonus.
Well, you know, we just said it's hard times, I'm sorry.
I just make sure understood. It's just.
Things done.
Yeah.
So y'all decide what you could do with schools.
Well. If we can't go with what I said, uh. I can back Benji. I mean, I know they got some little bit of. Loveful fan on our budget. Everybody does on our budgets. It's natural.
So what's your number budget?
Fifteen hundred. Would have been the seven billion, one hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars.
How does that compare to what was advertised?
It's just a little bit lower, makes it a stretch, need much.
Seven one, seven one thirty-two, nine fifty-two was advertised.
I've seen seven zero four zero seven seven eight.
That's not including the textbook. The ninety-one thousand textbook.
So you're including that in that figure?
Seven one one fifteen, I think, which is the textbook. We could ask Mr. Trump.
Did I include the textbooks, right? That number you gave us includes the textbook, right?
The seven million one for fifteen thousand?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, there is just required clarification.
I was rounding it down, Frank. There's six hundred ninety-seven on the end of it. If that's the figure you're gonna use, that's the projection we have.
Textbook is.
Well, and I actually, actually, I would have to make an adjustment. This one thing I didn't do in that piece, textbook, the. The ratio between textbook and the SOQ and other accounts would switch a little bit. But that is the total for textbook and everything together. So. Yep. The text.
Six nine seven.
Make a motion that we, uh, go with the seven one, one, five, six, nine, seven, ten.
What schools?
So. Yes.
Total, including textbook, include the textbooks.
The textbook on that figure, I have that if you'd like it. Textbook would be ninety thousand two seventy-one. A very slight shift.
Gentlemen, the most important football to fund is schools, seven billion, one, fifteen, nine, was it, I didn't get you last, last seven.
Sixty-nine, seven. Any discussion?
I will say that we advertise something different. So.
Didn't you say that'd be a percentage or something?
No, I'm not, I ain't gonna do that. I'm just saying, we advertise something to the public different than what we possibly could adopt another time. So. All those in favor? Of the schools. If you're one, one, five, six, two, five.
Six nine seven, that's a.
Six nine seven, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
So what you had was a motion just to determine a consensus.
Yes.
Everything starts back with the advertised budget. In a future meeting. That to adopt a budget in some way, shape, or form. So you just. You determine a consensus at this point in time.
So. We will advertise the budget?
If the number changed, why, why, why aren't we re-advertising it? It takes enough, right? We don't have enough for here, I know that.
The change is necessary when you're changing your rates. If you adopt the budget, it requires a higher tax rate. Then you're gonna have to re-ad.
Right, but in this case, we're not helping the citizens any. We're only taking things away. So you don't have to advertise again.
So gentlemen. What the? As far as my notes, the cola. The bonus. That change. And the school funding change. Are the only two things we're changing?
The cola didn't change. The amount of money in the cola did not change. That's gonna look exactly like. It will be an administrative. Change with the way people are compensated. With that amount of money. If the budget passes, it's accurate.
Okay.
But to be fair, it's not a increase. I mean, it's no longer a cola at all, because it's not an increase. It became a bonus. Just, I mean, we shouldn't attach the word cola to it at all now. Same amount of money, but it's one time, you said, correct?
Shouldn't it just go into the salary like, it's just part of the salary?
It doesn't go into the salary.
Not a, it's a bonus.
It won't, won't be reported to salary to income to VRS.
Right.
Okay.
Doesn't help them for retirement or anything.
Or taxes probably.
Just for one piece of context on the school's budget.
Bonus.
With that reduction of about sixteen thousand for the school's appropriation from the locality. The projected state reduction at fifteen hundred ADM is a hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. So to save the locality's about sixteen thousand, it would be costing the schools about a hundred and seventy-six thousand in available funding. I understand what you said about things coming back, but I wanted to just make sure that context was clear.
Can you say those numbers for me one more time? What's the amount we cut?
It shows that full funded at fourteen so.
Mr. Trump.
Yes, the, the state figure. Is one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Because when you, if, and as I said, this is projected, when the file capital comes out, we'll have that to have some final adjustments. But that is, that is the amount. With the tool we have and the methodology I have currently, that is the amount of state funding we would be projected to lose at fifteen hundred ADM versus fifteen fifteen.
Yeah, and the county, the county's reduction was sixteen thousand what? Brady, you know, you have it too, whoever, what was the amount that we just reduced it to?
It was sixteen thousand's change.
Yeah, what's the exact change?
I don't have any notes.
I believe seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-five dollars.
Seventeen thousand, two hundred fifty-five?
Yes, yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure I get it right when I communicate it out to citizens. Thank you.
Question?
Question for you? No, I mean. You had six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars in carryover last year. So you should still have some for this colored budget, so if you're looking at a seventeen thousand dollar difference, you should still be confident. I don't understand it. You did say as the numbers go up, you get the money right back, right? If we, if we match it. That's what you said down at me, right? Well, that's say you had fifteen fifty, and we bet that you'd get the money right back, so it's not lost, it's just. You're not expecting it.
We have to budget not expecting those funds.
Say it, but. You, if the numbers go up and we match it, you still get it back, correct?
We would get that back, but what we, I think the question is what can we use it for? And as I said, at this point in the year, we can prioritize it towards staff. And supporting students much more directly than things that might be criticized more later on, such as school bus and purchases we might get, because this figure would not be total until. Well, actually, we're still waiting on the final caboose budget. Calc tool, we're actually going to get our final distribution information in the first week of June. So we might get three hundred thousand extra dollars that we can't spend in three weeks. And currently, one of the reasons why I've had so much carryover. Is because historically, the county has funded us well above that minimum. So when we, so we have not fought to spend every penny to make sure that at the end of the year, we have a very solid balance to return to the general fund. That we can then ask for and carry over, which the board can grant or not. With the budget passed at the minimum. That carryover will not be there, because we'll have to be spending to meet those matching amounts and ensuring that we meet that match by spending just to do so. And generate savings through a year comes through personnel. You budget for staff, you can't fill a position, or you try to fill a position, instead of having that as savings we can give back if there's excess. That is stuff we'd have to turn around and say, we need to find a way to spend this to meet our match, and that's not how we want to operate.
Thank you, Mr. Trump.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. Do we have a budget to pass on Friday?
Make one other, one other thing then. And Friday, did you have a date for Friday?
I messed up, I messed up.
Oh, I didn't think we'd have a proposal. So one thing we haven't been clear about, um. When we're talking about these raises, et cetera, so the county administrator's contract. Says he only gets a increase when the board explicitly votes on an increase for him. We have not so far voted for an increase. To the county administrator. He's the only contract employee. So. We just need to be clear whether we intend for him to receive the increases or not.
My interpretation of the contract was he'd be treated like all other county employees. When it came to. The colors, the cost of lives. That's the way it been done, since, since I.
I, I talked to Jeff, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. It says increased only by vote of the board.
We do public or is it some closed session, since it's one person?
No, it's gotta be in public. Changes, changes to pay are in public. The process question. I already asked Jeff about all this.
The way I interpreted it, what Jeff intended to me, that he was treated as any other employee when it came to these type of raises. If there was a specific, uh, specific bonus to his salary, that would be voted on by the board. But as far as the cost of living. We all voted on that when we approved a budget. So what does the board want to do now?
For this, for the county administrator? Or she talking about past? Are we talking now or past?
I asked for now. Jeff and I've already, Jeff and I've already agreed, it hasn't been clear in the past, and that's why I'm asking for clarity now.
The way I asked, I thought it was always, we always agreed to all county employees. Correct?
That's the way I interpreted, that's the way I was under impression that it was done. His base salary is still his base salary. If, if his terms of his contract. Calls him to leave, he leaves with his base salary, not his. Polar salary.
As far as this, I think everybody should think about it, and we'll make a decision come when we move on the budget.
That sounds fair.
Yeah.
You can do it today. Hey, you're rushing into the.
As far as the, uh, the whole cola thing, I think we ought to. I'm cool with it, as long as we get clarification and do what's. Manipulate it the best for the. Employees. Whether it covers their benefits or whatever, however for they, that's, uh, like, we need to.
Well, we know it's not, we know it's not the best for the employees, because the bonus isn't gonna count toward their retirement. We know that today.
We, we had, the three of us had decided, I think we need to make sure we have the proper wording, which benefits the best before we. I'm not changing anything, just make sure it's worded how.
Do we have something we can have a vote on Thursday? Whoever you think you can vote on Thursday?
Whoever, you think you can vote on Thursday?
Oh, have you scheduled something for Thursday?
Well, that's the seven day mark. It doesn't have to be Thursday. I just threw Thursday out. Benji's out of town all next week.
I'm just, I didn't, I just thought I missed something. Oh, I can vote, doesn't, doesn't mean I'll vote in favor of it. I can vote.
What time y'all wanna do it Thursday?
This coming Thursday? I'll just tell it over here.
Stay in bed?
Six or seven. Six or seven.
No. I'm six oh seven.
I say seven, someone always have a job.
We will continue. Like to note, we'll be a continuing meeting. We'll continue this meeting till Thursday at six P M. With the sole purpose of a vote on the F five twenty-five.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I'm hearing y'all say six and seven.
What do y'all want to do?
Seven.
Six.
I said six.
Six o'clock, Thursday night, right here. We're voting on a proposal. All in favor?
Right here.
All opposed?
I'll let you find.
All right.